I'd like to bring to order the regular charter township of Foxer Planning Commission meeting of March 23rd, 2023. If we'd all rise with a pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. What just happened here? Let me get back up on order here. Would you note the roll this evening because we're kind of late?
Yes, it noted that there is a forum with the absence of Mr. Spiz, Mr. Hunwick, and Mr. Ballard.
Thank you. I need approval of this evening's agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve tonight's agenda, Thursday, March 23rd, 2023.
A second.
Well, I got two seconds, so I guess I'll go to the one on the right this time and the left next time. So, Mr. Knoll made a motion for approval of the agenda, Mr. Turner supported it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone that feels like they have any conflicts of interest or ex parte contact with anything we have on this evening's agenda?
No.
Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from the regular planning commission meeting of 3:923.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the regular planning commission dated 3:923.
I have a motion.
A second.
Mr. Bailey. Okay, I have a motion to approve the regular minutes of 3:923, supported by Mr. Bailey. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone from the public, which I do see some people from, a person from the public, and Phil, you could be the public too, that would like to comment on items that are not scheduled for this public hearing or anything that's on this agenda this evening? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to the commissioner's comments. Does any commissioner have a comment?
None tonight.
I see none there, so we're going to move right into our public hearing, which is, the petitioner would have to get up and present this public hearing, so I need a motion to open this public. Nope?
Nope.
We have to have a presentation by the petitioner first before we can open a public hearing.
Well, I was prepared to do a presentation. My request is going to be to postpone if we can do that. Does that come before the presentation or after?
Well, here's what's going to probably have to happen. We are, we are holding a public hearing and we have to hold the public hearing. You'll have to make your presentation as the petitioner, and then we either open the public hearing or not. Or no, we still open the public hearing because we could have, we could have someone possibly make public comment. So, and if there's public testimony, we still got to run through that. But then, I understand what you just said. From the beginning of your comment, you're requesting to postpone. I think that's what I heard you say.
Yeah, and I can cover that during the presentation too.
Okay. All right, so you are the presenter.
Yeah, Phil Caston, Director, Oxford Township Parks and Recreation.
Thank you.
So, what you have in front of you is a request to rezone. This is for the parcel that sits at 510 South Coates. This is a property that the Parks and Recreation Commission purchased a number of years ago as a old farm that was used for, to expand the Parks and Recreation space out there for additional recreation opportunities and to relocate our maintenance operations to that parcel, therefore allowing us to convert our previous maintenance operation up the front of the park to our administrative offices. So, all in all, that plan worked well. It's been a great transition. Staff's ecstatic to be, have everyone out in the park, and managing that park has become a lot easier for the staff. Maintenance operation is in full swing back there. Since I started in July, being, coming from Oakland County where I manage all of our residential leases, where we, at one time had a high of seventeen or eighteen of them, I think we were down to five when I left. It's not a good business for our park system to be in the rental business. We're not landlords, we're not interested in having tenants in residential properties. We've got a great tenant in there right now who has expressed interest in purchasing this house. So, in doing that, we've had to go through the zoning board of appeals to get some variances for the setbacks. That was approved with the condition of a rezone. So, we were able to get just over an acre of gross land with this property. There will be no changes to the use of the property, it will still be a residential property. In my opinion, it's a win-win. It will split it off from the Parks and Recreation, it will reduce our liability, but also put it back on the tax rolls because right now that parcel's not gathering any taxes for the township. So, splitting this off and selling it will allow us to do that and invest that income back into the park system into some capital projects we have in the books. So, my goal is to sell it. The rezoning of an acre, we do have a large subdivision just north of us that are all one-acre lots. Just north across Coates, there's a few half-acre parcels on suburban farm, five-acre spots. We do have a one-acre residential property on Seymour that's adjacent to the park as well, so there is an existing one-acre parcel that buts up to us already outside of the Corial subdivision. So, that's what we're trying to do. We are not in an extreme hurry. Seeing there's only four planning commissioners, that was my request to postpone when we can have all seven planning commissioners here to make sure, you know, this gets vetted properly and everyone gets their input, and we can then move forward hopefully to a positive resolution of the township board and move forward with the sale appraisal, so.
All right. Thank you. All right, then, next we have to open the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to open the public hearing tonight at 7:07.
I have a motion from Mr. Knoll to open the public hearing to ask support. I have a motion by Mr. Knoll, supported by Mr. Turner to open the public hearing at 7:07. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone here from the public that wishes to speak at this time? Please come up with a podium. Give us your name and your location, your address.
Hello, my name is Helen Schellworth. I live at 601 South Coates Road, kitty corner from the property. And what do I do, just?
Well, if you have any concerns, you would address those to us.
Okay.
And what you're concerned about.
Can I ask him something?
Actually, I don't think it's a question-answer situation for a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, what you have to do is just address to us.
Okay, I figured it out.
If any concern you have, we're listening to you.
Yeah.
Don't comment back and forth with discussion.
Gotcha.
Okay, sorry, I wish we could have done that earlier.
No, no, that's okay.
You might suggest we listen to her question if she had a question.
Yeah, I can work it in, I'll work it in. My, it's very simple. I just, you know, on Coates Road, I was not aware that there were any, any parcels that were less than five acres. There's some, there's some that are less than five acres because when they bought them, they had to take that road that, you just said the word, I can't think of it. You know, where they cut off that part of the road and it doesn't belong to you anymore? Okay, well.
I bet you're thinking right away.
Right away, yeah, of the, of the road, of Coates Road. So, some homes are not exactly five acres, but originally they were supposed to be five acres, and that's been upheld for a really long time. I was not aware there were any half-acre parcels on Coates Road. I guess I'll look into that. And my only concern is that this one acre would set a precedent on Coates Road where people could, this rezoning, then everybody else on Coates Road could start parceling off their properties to one-acre parcels. And I would not be in favor of that, to be quite honest with you, and... I guess that's all I have to say.
That's your comments, we thank you for that.
Yes.
Thank you. I need to ask if there's anybody else from the public at this time that would like to speak. And I'm seeing none, so I would say I would need a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing at 7:10.
I need support.
A second.
Okay. I have a motion to close the public hearing at 7:10, and I, from Mr. Knoll, and I have support by Mr. Bailey. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now I would need comments from the township's consultants and staff, so that's our young lady up there that's ready to do that for us.
Good evening, I'm Megan Nasson Minock. I'm the, with Carla Worfman, the planning consultant for the township. And you had a letter in your packet, I'm not going to go through the full presentation tonight, I would like to hit a couple of highlights in terms of what you would need to make in terms of decisions, and then also perhaps answer the question that was presented during the, during the public hearing. There's a lot of history to this parcel in that it was incorporated into the park, and that was probably the reason why it was future land use planned for recreation. At the time, when you were looking at the master plan in 2019, you had a different Parks and Recs director, you had, and so that's a circumstance that has changed, and at that point in time, the township was maintaining those residential leases. Since that, you had a change, and I think your planning, your Parks and Recs director has expressed why that was changed. And so, whenever you are making a decision that's not in keeping with the future land use map, you're going to need to cite a circumstance as to what, that has changed, as to why then now it is the right thing to do in order to rezone something that's not on the future land use map. So, a change in policy, as was described by the Parks and Recs director, is appropriate. Also, as you know, this went through the zoning board of appeals and got multiple variances, and also there were multiple variances on the parent parcel, the larger parcel that's remaining as the park, because where the, some of the buildings were built, they don't meet the, they don't meet the setbacks for an accessory building or a primary building in the recreation zoning district. So, basically, the ZBA in granting all those variances made everything on these two pieces of property as proposed to be split legal. And that runs in perpetuity with the land, so the variance will always be with the land, no matter who owns it. Also, with the way that this is set up, the, and with the way the house is situated, there is a non-conforming front yard. That wasn't one of the variances, but that non-conforming front yard would be non-conforming whether it's in the recreation or any of your residential zoning districts. So, it was felt that that wasn't something that you needed a variance for because it's not being created, it was already there based on where the house was set back from the road when it was originally built. The other thing that I wanted to highlight tonight, just for everybody to have in their heads as they're going forward in case this is postponed, is the zoning district that was choo, chosen for this to go to is a one-acre lot. And that was based on the size of it, and if you look at the zoning variance very carefully, you'll see that your minimum lot size is net, which this is just below one acre, and Roast, it's over one acre, and that's because of the right way. But to answer the question from the public, this would not set up a situation where every parcel along Coates Road could be rezoned to one acre, because if, Mr. Chair, you can go into our reviewers, there's their future land use map snippet, you'll see that the...
Do you want to miss it?
It is on page seven, so it's just below master plan.
Right here.
Yes. So, you see all of those ones that are light green, those are five acres.
Right about there.
Yeah. And you can see that if you get up by Seymour Lake, you can see there's some smaller parcels, there's a big parcel, then there's some smaller parcels. It looks like there might be a private road going through there that might...
This road right here.
Yeah.
No, that's just a property line.
It's just a property line.
Just a property line. So, there are some small, smaller parcels around there. Those were probably split at one time, and then this was later planned and zoned for five-acre lots. So, you can see that's planned and zoned for five-acre lots, and the orange, yes, right there, that is one-acre lots. So, if you look down Coates, none of that area is planned for, is planned for one-acre lots, as neither is the subject site, so as we call the area of interest. Right, in the, in the white outline over the, over the green. So, that's the reason if you were looking at approving this rezoning, you would need to make a finding about what policy circum, what circumstances have changed that would allow this. And also to note that the variances are predicated on, or conditional upon, this rezoning being granted. So, those will not become active unless this zone, rezoning is recommended, is after your recommendation approved by the township board.
Okay, one comment you made a little earlier, I just, I mean, I kind of stuck it in my brain for a second, I forget some things so quick and fast. You said it would not set a precedence for any other land use for, to go to a greater density than what we already have in place with the master plan.
Correct.
So, this would only be for this particular lot, that's the way you stipulated.
That it's only be for this particular lot, and what also, by having it to the one-acre result, the one-acre zoning district, that locks into place the density that's there. Basically, you couldn't put another house in it, you're not going to be able to split that lot again, even if they knocked down the house and knocked down that garage, they're not going to be able to get another split out of it. So, what it does is you have a single-family dwelling on this piece of property right now. This enables the Parks and Recs Department to sell it, put more resources into maintaining, improving, and buying recreation facilities and land, which meets their goals in, in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which is also a guiding document for the township as well as the master plan. You can take those goals and objectives in that plan into account and take your decision. But by using the proposed zoning district, again, it's only going to be one acre, it's only going to be one house. Even if that house is knocked down, it's only going to be a house likely, it's not big enough for some of the other uses in the, in that, that are non-residential in that residential zoning district to go there, and you're not going to be increasing the density along Coates Road. You're just going to be allowing a residential, creating a residential lot that can be split off and sold, so that asset can be back on the tax rolls, and then there are more resources for the Parks and Recreation to achieve their vision, goals, and objectives.
Okay, can I ask another question quickly?
Sure.
Can you see the little cursor here?
Yeah.
It's kind of moving. This piece that's right here, it's green. This would be on the south side of the proposed property we're talking about, right?
Yeah.
So, it'd be sandwiched between Parks and Recs properties, right?
That's the future land use plan. So, if you go...
But this, this is not zoned recreational yet, then?
I don't think so. If you...
So, that it's not sandwiched between?
No. Yeah.
Okay, that was my only question, it's only for future land use. But we may not, we may not want to keep it that way in the future.
Right, when you look at your master plan again, you, it was adopted in 2019, you should be looking at it in 2024.
Correct. Thank you for that answer. All right, let's start with Mr. Bailey, he has a question.
I was going to ask the same question about the, the dark green to the south, but what about the one to the north?
Right here.
It, doesn't the park already own that one?
Yes. And it's currently zoned recreation, that's why I was kind of surprised to see it not zoned recreation.
But this is a future land use map that hasn't, hasn't been corrected yet.
So, in 2024, I'll sit down with you.
Okay.
Yeah, and then if you go back, if you go one page down, if you scroll down, you'll see the zoning.
Right here.
And you'll see that...
Now, you'll see where this is not part of this, and then you'll see where the other piece that's right there that he just questioned. No, that's the house. The piece is actually right where the cursor sits right now.
Right.
That's another piece the township park owns, and that's the way it's all done in dark green. So, correct, this is the piece they're pulling out that's wrapped around in the white. All right, Mr. Knoll.
They have your map there.
What?
They have your map there. On the upper left-hand corner, on the north side, is that yellow block.
Right here.
What's the estimated size of that piece of property?
Three acres.
Three acres?
Yeah, I looked at purchasing it. You want to know that, or? It's got a pond that kind of, it intermixes with part of the residential component of, there's a, there's a, these are called condominiums, not what they were apartment buildings at one time. This is right next to it, and there's a pond right on the property line. This is a three-acre parcel, another person picked it up, they recently built a detached accessory building and done some other improvements.
The property north of the house in the white line that we're discussing?
Right here, right here.
Where does that road lie in there? There's a road that goes into the park.
It's more of a drive.
Yeah, it's a drive.
What it does, it comes in here, and then sweeps down through here and comes back out and comes up to Seymour Lake Park.
Okay.
Mostly just to get cars out during the fireworks, isn't it?
Well...
If you go up to page three of our letter, there's an aerial photographs in that could show you where exactly those things happened.
I'm getting close.
Yep, you are. Thank you.
Four, should be right up here. Somewhere right, right there. There's other road kind of meanders. It's a drive, I don't call it a road because it's not a named road.
Sorry.
It's a, yeah.
Service drive.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are you, are you satisfied?
I'm satisfied.
Mr. Turner, do you have any questions?
Well, I was just going to ask, there's several other buildings next to this parcel.
Way over here. I'm sorry, my cursor's a little sticky.
Are there any intent by the Parks and Recs Department that still use those? Will you be taking them down, or are they for your maintenance, or for what?
Yeah, so there's a couple buildings that were there when we bought it. One of them is an old barn that we had recited and we used for storage. We added a lead to, and the next that is a small, old, maybe like milkhouse type thing that's, that's got the least variance on them, but that is still another storage building we used and then built our maintenance part next to that. But, no, we're not planning on removing any of the buildings, they would all stay.
Any answer what you need, Mr. Turner? Anybody else with any questions? I don't know, I heard quite a bit, so I don't think I have any at this point in time. Because Mr. Sharp had sent me an email and asked if he needed to be here this evening, I said there isn't anything pertaining, anything with engineering. I told him to enjoy his evening off with his family. So, he is not here, we do not have any correspondence to review. And I don't believe after this, and I, I have to stroll down, I don't believe we had any other correspondence. I'll just double-check real quick. There were several pages in the mix, but I, I think we were all done once we got through it, Megan. That was the last, that was the last one we had, was through that, through Carla Worfman. So, at that point in time, we have a discussion of anything the commissioners may want to talk about if they are done talking or not. Mr. Bailey, do you have any comments at this point in time?
No, just the, the question about delaying, is that something we were going to need to make out?
We'll get to that in a minute. We have to get through the actual public hearing first before we can make a dis, a decision on what we're going to do with the motion. Mr. Knoll, do you have any comments?
I have no comment if we're going to go ahead with the postponement.
Correct, okay, Mr. Turner, you're set too?
I'm set.
Okay, we have no further commissioner comments. I don't have any either because it was a request to withdraw and postpone to another meeting date. So, I would, I would need a motion, I think, then, to make that postponement occur.
You would need a motion to table the discussion.
No, not table. We need a motion to postpone this.
You have to pick a date.
We have, if we make a postponement, we got to pick a date. He, he wants to pick a date. He said he wasn't in a hurry, that's what I heard him say, he just wants to keep it moving. But we'd probably have everybody here, I need to let people know that I, I'm not here for the month of April, so I need to let you know that now, so if we want to postpone, you might want to go into a, a date after April.
May 11th would be the first meeting we could have, correct, Susan?
Yeah.
Or May 25th?
I'll just double-check real quick.
I mean, if I, if I had my choice, it'd be, I would prefer to know what else is coming on your agendas or not.
Apparently on May 11th, we have another PC meeting agenda with the M, M1 Homes. And so, we, you may want to go, if that's your case, you may want to go to May 25th. If you, if you, if that's what our motion is going to be.
I, I'm prepared to make a motion, but I just want to make sure it's acceptable.
Well, that, okay, is that...
I got a thumbs up. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone this activity tonight on parcel 0430200058, known as Seymour Lake Park property. The motion will be moved, or the postponement will be, I suggest be moved to May 25th, 2023.
I have a motion by Mr. Knoll, I need support for that motion for discussion.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Knoll to postpone the meeting to a meeting date of May 25th, and supported by Mr. Bailey for the petitioner that's present tonight. And you know what, I, I think we'll do a roll call.
Sure.
Just, I know there's only four here, but...
Turner?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, so your motion has been then now postponed for the activity of what occurs at a, a future date.
So, there won't be a public hearing next one, it'll just continue from where we left off right now?
Correct. And we've already had the public hearing held tonight.
Okay.
So, we are next on the agenda, which is unfinished business, we have none, we have no new business. We have communications and our committee reports, and Mr. Bailey was asking me about the economic development committee. I don't believe they have anything to report at this minute. Mr. Turner, do you know anything about it?
I don't.
We do have some...
I've been waiting for Mr. Bailey.
Okay, we do have some comments to make from ordinance review committee, I don't know, Megan, if you want to even help us with it, you can, I, I can make the comments. You want me to do it? You did fine tonight already, you were almost running out of breath. We had a nice meeting, ORC meeting this afternoon, so currently what we're working diligently with is the signage that we have in the township and trying to modify it with new things that come into place with digital and electronics and all the different components of lighting and how signage is incorporated into the aspect of LEDs and what they do to us and billboards and all the different uses that are involved with signage by speed limit control and all the other stuff. So, we had a nice meeting today, we're in the, we have a set of new priorities that we've committed to, that we're going to try and get to in the future on the agenda, but signage is kind of a big concern because the communities are always changing from year to year, and we're looking at what other communities do around us to try and get some guidance that way too. And plus, we still have a village which Mr. Knoll is involved with, kind of helping us out in that direction. So, we had a very good meeting and we're going to move forward. I don't know that we, if we have any engineering reports, but he's not here.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I might like to ask, if I may, that Carla Worfman explain what's next, what we could expect on May 25th when we come back to discuss this? Is that true?
Yeah, I, yeah, she's, she was going to get up next and speak anyway, but that's good you're tackling her.
So, to answer your question, planning commissioner Knoll, on May 25th, what you, where you should start from is, I, I would think that you would ask the petitioner to make another presentation just in case there's public here who are watching, to have context, and also there are planning commissioners who are absent. You could ask myself, as your planning consultant, to give a short presentation again, but really what you should be prepared to is to be making a decision. And again, looking at, if you're going to make a decision that is not in keeping with the future land use plan, you need to make findings as to why, and how circumstances have changed.
That was a good comment, because I think what's important here is that the presentation needs to be presented again to start because we have people that are in attendance at this meeting, and then we skip all the open public hearing and, and public testimony and close, and then we go right into comments from the township's consultants and staff, and then we just follow through with what we would do normally to then put this into a vote. So, that's where we start with the next component of that meeting. So that's where we, uh, start with the next, uh, component of that meeting.
To, to refresh our memories, would this end at this level or would this go to the township?
No, it's a recommendation to the township board.
Yes.
Did you stand on that, please?
Yes, you make a recommendation to the township board and the township board, um, would be, make the decision.
They have the final say.
They have the final say. And because it's an ordinance change, they would have two hearings. So, this is the first of three, that would be the first, this is the first of four public meetings that would be in regard to this. You have this public, you have this public hearing. You'll have your next meeting where you, I expect that you will likely make a decision. Um, you could recommend to, recommend approval or recommend denial to the township board. The township board would take it up, um, and again, they would have two readings. So that would be the process.
So the residents understand that they will have another opportunity to come back for two more public hearings at the board level?
They're not really public hearings, though.
They can speak at the, all of them are open meetings, so.
You used the term "public" and did I misunderstand?
Um, sorry, readings. And so at the township board level.
So the township board level, there'll be two meetings?
Mm-hmm, two readings, yeah.
And two opportunities for the public to speak?
Yes, and they could speak anytime during public conference.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, in terms of Carla Worfman report, um, we are, um, assisting the building department with updating applications and processes. So we started with site plan review, um, and trying to make sure that they, and update those forms and update those processes so that they match what's in the zoning ordinance per the amendments. Um, and then looking to work through the rest of the, um, processes as well. And then, um, we've been busy with reviews. Um, we've had end variances coming in. Um, so there's a billboard, I know, an electronic message sign that will be on the zoning board of appeals agenda coming up in April. Um, and then, right now, also four eleven, uh, North Oxford, um, resubmitted for their final site plan. Um, so that may be on your first meeting in April if that comes back with clean reviews for their final site plan.
Well, it could still be on even if it didn't come back with clean reviews, right?
Yeah.
But it wouldn't be likely to do that.
It would not be likely to do that, yes.
Alright. And do you have any other comments for Carla Worfman this evening?
No, but if you have, you answer any questions.
I, I just, it was just that we were down to where we were looking for either planners or engineers reports and I think you did a fine job.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I think the next thing we're gonna have is adjournment. At what time? Seven thirty-eight? We're gonna adjourn that meeting. Thank you. And thank you for attending.